To the Select Board for, what is today?
Fifteen.
January fifteenth. We're now getting into winter and we still haven't had any snow.
We're about to get some.
Okay, it won't jinx us. Announcements. Mr. Franco, I understand you have an announcement?
I just wanted to remind this board and our vast TV audience about a meeting tomorrow evening, an open house related to the Boyle-Sinci Quarter or Planning Study, which I know has been a long-term topic of conversation in this community. My understanding is that there's going to be an open house and some conversation about work that's taking place in this, in this building, Tab Hall, Room 103, starting at seven, lasting until nine o'clock tomorrow night. I plan to attend and I think others will, will be there as well.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Select person green, I, I think there's a Martin Luther King celebration on Monday.
I'm sorry.
I know you've been spearheading that.
Yes. On Monday, January twenty-first, our annual Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Event will occur at the Coolish Corner Theater. It's going to be incredible program this year, starting mainly because of a film, interviews of a number of Brookline residents, including Bobby Nable, who we all know from the Advisory Committee, Michael Dukakis, and, and others, talking about their experiences during the Civil Rights Era, and, you know, their recollections of events at that time, including here in Brookline. After that, I will be interviewing Patricia Nguyen, who is a, who's the editor of the Spotlight Team at the Globe, who did the series on Race in December of two thousand seventeen. And what we're going to hopefully do is to provide some reflections on, you know, the experiences of the interviewees in, in the film, and how we have progressed since that time, the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, to today. So it should be a very interesting program. Also, as people will be happy to know, Reggie Gibson will also be performing. He's going to have a, an unusual or different performance, it's not just a poetry reading, but he, he's going to have a soprano and a string trio that will be providing music composed for the purposes of a bigger program that he has put together involving the words of Martin Luther King. It's called "In His Own Words." It should be an incredible, incredible experience. The Testosterones from Brookline High School will also be performing, as well as our poet laureate, Zee Sussling. So it's incredible program. It's probably sold out by now, but if you're interested, go to Eventbrite and, and, and at least put your name in for tickets.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me.
So subtly, too.
All right, I've been in court as a juror for the last couple of days, so I'm trying to get back into the normal world.
Okay. Let's delve into our calendar. We have minutes from January second. Anyone have any changes? So I'll move the minutes for January second. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Green.
And the chair votes aye. Ah, yeah. Anyone, I skipped public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Okay. Sorry about that. Next item is a question of approving a contract with R.D. Kimball, doing business as NV5, the amount of $277,981 for designer services related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project. Mr. Masak?
Yes, this is for commissioning services. It's sort of needed.
What does that mean?
That means they check the operation of the building to make sure it's operating in.
So this is at the end?
This is at the end of the project.
Ooh.
But you bring them on early so that they can do design, design reviews throughout and really be fully engaged so they understand what they're testing at the end of the project.
Cool. Okay. We're looking ahead.
Right. I mean, in some ways, it reminds me of the effort to bring a construction manager on early, you know, because you get a better product in the end if you have people who really understand the systems and have been a part of designing.
As someone who's commissioned most of the buildings, it is an important tool to have on early.
Right. And this is a big project, so it's good to.
Have many eyes.
Right.
On the design.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Masak? I'll approve, I'll move that we approve the contract with R.D. Kimball, doing business as NV5, in the amount of $277,981 for designer services related to the Brookline High School Expansion Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. We have a committee of seven, and this is related to the Baldwin and Driscoll School for an owner's project manager. Do I see any volunteers, Mr. Green?
I'd like to do that.
Okay. You're, you're.
I'm it.
You're it. I'll move that we appoint.
Oh, you don't like that? Oh, great.
I'll move that we appoint select person Green to be the chairperson of the owner's project manager service, committee of seven for owner, project manager services related to the Baldwin and Driscoll School Projects. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Can I, can I just make a comment on that previous agenda item? I'm heartened to see that within this, this package, there's some mention of the, the need for some lead familiarity and, and green, green expertise. I know that this has been a long time coming together and I'm glad that we sort of are responsive to town meetings' wishes. So thank you, Mr. Masak, for that.
Okay. Okay. And next item is a question of approving the procurement of proprietary items for the Brookline High School Expansion Project. Mr. Masak?
This is a standard vote, project by book. Project, and we bring these same items to you specific, it has to be project-specific. So these are the typical items, mainly centered around the doors, the firearm panels and the temperature control systems. And also, I believe, there's one more LW bill, which is another fire department-related item.
Yeah, so this is so we can have common alarm systems, HVAC controls, so it makes maintenance easier.
True master key across.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's especially, to be able to have common keys.
It's very important when a fire department comes in that they see the same box.
Right. Right. Makes absolute sense to me. Any questions on this item? I'll move that we, where is this? We approve the procurement of proprietary items for the Brookline High School Expansion Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's it. Thank you. And next up is Chief Lipson, and this is accepting a grant from the state's E-911 Program in the amount of $185,634. Chief Lipson?
Good evening. Pleased to be before the board tonight to request your approval for a state E-911 grant, in the amount, as you said, of $185,634. It'll be used primarily for personnel costs, as well as dispatch furniture and cleaning of the dispatch consoles in the center.
I've got to ask what a 24/7 chair is for the dispatch center?
A 24/7 chair is basically a category of chair that is ergonomic and built for intent use. It's like a heavy-duty, extreme chair.
Great for your back.
Yes.
Yeah, I hope it's a good one.
So I, one other question. Maintenance and intensive cleaning, I assume this is a special cleaning? Don't you, don't we have a budget for just ongoing regular maintenance and cleaning?
It is. This is a special company that's contracted to come in. I would equate it to like having your car detailed, they get in and vacuum out all the keyboards and mouses and consoles and.
And they have to do it while the center is, is in operation? And they have to know not to do certain things, which blows it up.
Kind of blow off and stuff like that.
Right. Okay. So I'll move that we accept this grant from the state E-911 Grant Program in the amount of $185,634. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. And next up is Mr. Russell, and this is an amending an existing contract for on-call stormwater consulting services with Brown and Caldwell in the amount of $284,846. What's going on?
Good evening. Real briefly, back in 2016, EPA issued us the Phase Two MS4 permit to replace the 2003 permit, so essentially we were on year sixteen of a five-year permit. Anyway, so, and 2016, we had a lot of comments, a lot of questions from municipalities, they put, they actually placed a stay on the permit and then reissued it in 2018, in this past July. If the board recalls, back in 2014, we went out for a request for qualifications for stormwater consulting on-call services, and we selected Brown and Caldwell. Their master services contract, it was three-year contract, they've since expired, so we had to renew that and then let them take us into the next phase under the new permit.
Okay. Any questions from the board? None? And I'll move that we amend the contract for on-call stormwater consulting services, Task orders one through five, with Brown and Caldwell, in the amount of $284,846. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next up is the team, Mr. Dido. Question of approving a change order in the amount of $23,711 and 13 cents, in connection with a contract for the backfill, back landfill closure and reuse projects with Jay Bateson's son. Okay, and we have a show.
Where are you going? I just want to make sure. This is Jay Yurci, environmental engineer. He was the project engineer and project manager on all the landfill closure contracts. He's doing a great job, he did a great job. And it's kind of bittersweet, we've been doing this for over 20 years and now it's coming to a close. So it was a great, you know, working hard and learning a lot, and, you know, that's all coming to an end, but we have a great facility out there, and I just want to make sure Jay Bateson's recognition. That being said, we have a video here that's kind of neat, that I'd like to play in memory of a couple of still shots, and I'd like to go out and play out where some of the operations are going to take place on the landfill.
Okay.
That's the so-called real landfill there.
That's the real landfill there now.
So where, where the video started was Skyline Park?
That was Skyline Park.
I should do it over, play it again.
So that's Skyline.
Skyline Park. And this is the real landfill.
Okay, and.
It's all DPW operations there. The transfer station.
And then all the way to the.
We have some photos.
Okay.
Probably.
And then all the way to the left, after, has it, it looks like there's a clearing?
It's not right there.
Yeah. So all the way at the bottom left, what, what is that?
Okay, so this is conservation land, right through here.
Ah.
And.
That's conservation land. And that's lost pond?
Lost pond, which isn't lost anymore. But that drains out here, and part of this project was to be like, you know, like, so this, instead of being in a pipe, is now a channel comes out through here, and then eventually winds up all over you. This is, you can see right now, we have all these bins.
Right, that's the hazardous waste collection?
Yes. Since then, I've been, Kevin Johnson decided it would be better off to move it over here. So if you go out there now, you'll see all these, a piece of equipment over here. So along this wall, we have bins and it's construction material.
Come back so our TV audience can hear you.
So this is the DPW's main operations area.
To the, to the mic, Peter. Thanks.
And things that will be taking place are, that's where we recycle our concrete and asphalt pavements. When the town DPW does some utility work, we take those materials, stockpile them up here, and once a year, we hire a crusher, and they come in for about a week, and they crush the concrete, make crushed stone out of that. Yeah, same thing with the asphalt, we crush that and mix it in with, with the crushed We also will be doing, we process our leaves and wood chips from this location. The leaf dump right now is down in as far right as you can go on the black pavement. We're also going to conduct the Household Hazardous Waste Day again in a new location, but that will be starting up in the first week in May, and it runs through the last week in October.
And that's every, what, Thursday?
Thursday.
Every Thursday?
We also process steel, the so-called white goods, which are dishwashers, washing machines, we recycle that from this site also. The, it's also going to be a large storage area for us, which we need very badly, and what I said earlier, the materials that we have stockpiled in bins along this lower wall include crushed stone, loam, mulch, fiber, which are the wood chips that go underneath the swings in our parks. Also have compost up there and then gravel.
Where do you take the processed concrete, asphalt and other?
It's stockpiled there. There, we have a bin that's probably about the size of this room.
They reuse it.
They crush it and reuse it and just fill.
Yeah, we use that as backfill for all our trenches in the public way. And for equipment, there's quite a bit of equipment up being stored there now, and that includes snowplows, backhoes, loaders, bog cats, and drop-off containers. So there's a lot of activity up there right now, and it's, it's really nice to have a site that you can work with, and that's that. So this extra work order is, we, it's needed a budget for pavement and by $21,000, roughly, dollars. There's sufficient money in the appropriation to cover this extra work order, and when you think of the overall cost of this project, which was $37, and this is the override, the overrun, $21,000, it's very de minimis.
So this is the last bill we're going to see on the landfill?
Well, we're still going to be, we have to do monitoring, get little reports.
Right, but from, from the project itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a DEP requirement. So we're asking approval of that extra work order.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. This, as Mr. Dido said, this has been a project long in the making, seeing it come to a conclusion, and it's a, I think this, this project's been going on as long as I've been involved in town government, so, yeah. Not much.
We spent $18 million on construction and another $4 million on consultant services, so this, this project's only $22 million worth of work.
Right. Okay. Wow, cool. Okay, so I will move that we approve the change order in the amount of $23,711 and 13 cents, in connection with the contract for back, back landfill closure and reuse project. 13 cents in connection with the contract for back landfill closure and reuse project with Jay Bates and son. All those in favor, please say a select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a temporary license. This is all kinds alcoholic beverage, non-sales to Lars Anderson Auto Museum at 15 Newton Street for a 50th birthday party to be held on Saturday, January 26th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. And paperwork appears in order?
Police department has reviewed the paperwork and sees no reason to deny the application.
Okay. So I'll move that we grant this temporary license. All those in favor, please say a select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Next up is the BAA, here to request a special use permit for the running of the 2019 Boston Marathon. It's funny to be thinking about the Boston Marathon in the middle of January, and you're not Stuart Wall.
I'm glad someone noticed.
Yeah.
I am not Stuart Wall. Nope. Good evening. My name is Lauren Prochan. I'm the new director of operations at the Boston Athletic Association, have been in the position about four months, but have been working alongside of the BAA and Boston Special Events and Specifics for much longer than I'd like to admit. So, thank you for having me here this evening. As you mentioned, the intention is for us to move to approval to hold the 2019 Boston Marathon. We are looking to operate within the same footprint as in previous years, so at any point, stop me if you've heard this before. I'm happy to go over kind of the...
No, well, the public should hear.
Please, by all means. So as in the past, we're looking to have the same 30,000 participants as in historic year going backwards, with the earliest wave leaving Hopkinton at 6:00 a.m. and the final wave leaving at 11:15. The first one being the military march, and then our wave four being mainly our charity runners. So there is still a six-hour time limit. The last runner is expected to finish in Boston at 5:30 p.m. Runners will enter Brookline on Beacon Street from Cleveland Circle and exit into the Audubon Circle and are expected to be in Brookline from approximately 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with expected road closures from 9:00 a.m. to 5:45 p.m. There are still the same for medical tents and two hydration stations at mile markers number 23 and 4. Most importantly, we will still have our three pedestrian crossing points. Those are located at Beacon and Tappan, Beacon and Webster, and Beacon and Hogg Streets, so those will still be fully functioning and operational as they have in years past. We are continuing to work with Brooklyn PD, Fire and Emergency Services, as well as our state partners, to ensure that the course is fully supported in all three areas of our jurisdiction. We're also working to be more involved with our local EOCs to make sure that their requests and needs are being filtered through our JCC and Boston Operations Center to make sure that we're filling those needs in a more expedition manner than years past. From what I'm told, it rained last year, so it kind of threw a wrench in our plans in some areas, cities and towns. But if anything, it made us realize that there were some deficiencies and holes in our previously organized manner. And so it, that rain, that biblical rain, has made us really focus on a few main areas that we can improve theories. So where I would never wish that event to happen again in the same manner, we are grateful that it did happen because it actually showed some of our strength, our weaknesses and what we can improve. So other than that, the events will kind of go along the same pathway. No major changes on roadways, but nothing else at this time to report for the Boston Marathon.
Okay, so it's pretty much, operationally for the town and the residents of the town, it's pretty much the same?
Exactly.
As last year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I think things went pretty smoothly from an operations perspective.
I cannot predict the weather, unfortunately.
Right.
So please don't ask.
That we have no control over.
Not yet.
Right. Not yet.
Misick.
Um, any questions from the board?
I'll give thanks. We've, as I'm sure you know, have a successful charity program here in town, where we sort of band together all the numbers that we get as a host community, one of the host communities in the marathon. So thank you for allowing us to do that and do some good for local nonprofits who serve the citizens of Brookline.
It's exactly what they're for. We're so glad to hear that it goes to the right foot. So thank you.
Okay, so I will move that we do what? We grant the special use permit? You're getting nervous.
I'd be the shortest-lived ops director in BAA history if you said no.
For the running of the 2019 Boston Marathon scheduled for April 15th. All those in favor, please say a select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. The next item is postponed, removal of a public shade tree. That was going to be a hearing on a little disagreement between our tree warden and homeowner, but that'll happen probably next week.
I think it might actually happen in two weeks.
Or in two weeks, okay. Next item on the calendar is a question of approving the purchase and sale agreement for the properties located at 15 to 19 Oak Street. And we had a discussion of this in executive session, that we've reached agreement with the homeowners. The terms are pretty much as agreed to in the offer. Nothing's, nothing's changed, pretty much. And the delay was just some of the legal details. So we're on track, and the town is obligated by virtue of, of the town meeting vote to purchase the Oak Street property, so we're doing that. So do we need another vote?
I don't believe so. You should just disclose that you did vote in executive session.
Okay, so we disclosed it. So we, we've noticed a 7:30 public hearing. What I'm going to do is move up the budget objectives, which is the last item on our So Mr. Casanova-Davis, your maiden voyage on this item.
Good evening, Justin Casanova-Davis, Assistant Administrator. I'm here before you with a list of the fiscal year 20 select board budget objectives, getting your feedback. It's a compilation of different departmental objectives. That tells a lot of the good work that we're doing in town, and just wanted your feedback so we can get us approved on the next select board meeting.
Okay. I couldn't find mention of the high school project. Did I miss it?
High school project. We mentioned it just in the first bit of the overview, or the second bit of overview of CIP. I can specifically mention the high school project?
I think you should, since it's the biggest project the town has ever done in terms of money. So, yeah, it deserves its own bullet.
Could I make a suggestion? I think that one of the things about, this document has gotten, you know, longer, and every year that I've been on the board, it seems to add a few and not take away too many. So I'm wondering whether we could have some organization of it that would have some subheadings?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, for instance, I'm trying to look for the energy issues and, you know, they're, they're down here, number 34, I think, begins. But I think it would, it would be a good idea. I know that there will be some overlapping ones, and maybe you can just refer to those or, you know, figure out some way to, to talk about it, but either by department or by program to, to organize it in that way, I think, would be helpful for us and also for the public, people who are trying to read it and want to see what... That's the first comment I have. The second is that on the energy issues, the, there are numbers 34 through 38 talk about our energy policies, solar facilities, energy reduction plans, fossil fuel-free opportunities, et cetera. The one thing I don't see in here, and I believe we should address, is the issue of an all-electric fleet or a hybrid fleet of cars. We, I know that the building department is working on this issue, and I think we should A) acknowledge that and B) understand that that, that it's a goal of ours to have a fleet that's more environmentally friendly. So you can add it, I think, to number 36, is develop a plan to transition to all electric vehicles for all, all town-owned vehicles. And I'm not just thinking of the cars. I know right now, there probably no fire trucks that are electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles, but, you know, I think in the future, there may be. And so I think we ought to be able to keep our eyes out, not only fire trucks, but police cars and police vans and, you know, everything we use in the vehicle department. So I believe we should add that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I also made some changes consistent with what select person Heller suggested in her first suggestion with respect to the diversity issues. And I didn't circulate it to the entire board for meeting purposes, but I assumed that would get out to people. And what I basically did was to take eight, nine, and 10, and first of all, separate eight into a section that says to provide excellent government services that effectively address the needs of all citizens. And then separate from that, include the diversity issues in a new section nine. And like I said, it would be circulated to the board. But what I wanted to do was try to sort of make those issues a little more focused and clear and specific in terms of what we want to do. So I have five subsections under a new section that's labeled to integrate diversity and inclusion into the town's services and planning, and then including five specific items.
Thank you.
So I've got a couple of comments. I think in the second bullet point of number one, we should reference the fact that there was a 2017 override study committee. I think, I think it was much a continuation of the work of 2014, but I think we just need to sort of check the box there and acknowledge that it happened.
So it should say, build on the work of the 2014 and 17 override study committees in the plural.
I think in seven, I would, I would strike the word continue and replace it with abide-by. I think this is...
The what?
Abide-by, or some variation of that. I bring this up because it's a topic that I think the BFA committee is going to want to discuss, and I think we just need to make that language change a little, to provide some clarity about where the board is. In, in number 15, regarding marijuana, recreational marijuana, I think we need to reference some of our local bylaws in town meeting decisions. It's not just the regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission, also actions of town meeting. In around number 30, I don't see a reference to the land bank committee that, so one person, Heller is chairing, and whether it's in 30 or in a different bullet point, I think we just need to...
Select person Hamilton.
Hamilton, excuse me. I want to give everything to select person Heller, I guess.
Got a good job.
Run you ragged. We just need to, I think, add that committee to the budget objectives.
Which one is that?
The land bank.
The land bank committee.
And then my final comment is, I think just before or just after number 31, we should add an objective around the creation of senior housing, and perhaps even reference some of the Jewish community housing for the elderly project, AKA...
Now called to life.
To life.
Could you, could you collapse that with number 30?
I have no objection to that.
Okay.
I think we need to be thinking about the regulation and taxation of short-term rentals. We now have that ability. We need to be thinking about that going forward. And we should have a reference in here to whatever is going to happen at Newberry College. That should be a budget priority because it may affect our budget.
If we're successful.
Or even if we're not successful, it's going, then the issue becomes one of regulation of land use. So one way or another, we need to be thinking about Newberry College. And that's kind of all I had.
So it's our practice to consider these and then bring back a revised one. We'll do that in the, break those up into the functional categories and hopefully be a little bit more readable and follow it better. And so we'll bring that to your, for your approval next week.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay. And I declare it to be 7:30, and it's close enough. We dropped the word approximately from calendar. We've got to put that word back in. Okay, so now we have a public hearing on the petition of Verizon New England and N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource for permission to relocate a joint pole in two petitions of Eversource to construct locations for such lines and conduits and manholes. And this is on Thorndike Street, 45 feet northwest of Harvard. Let's all on Thorndike Street. So who's here from Verizon or N-Star or both?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Bigley. I work for utility consultant Synergetics. I'm contractor for Verizon, and I'm here to represent Verizon's interests in the petition to relocate pole seven on Thorndike Street.
Okay, so why don't you describe the project and describe the impact on the abutters?
There is a new building going up, 455 Harvard Condos, and apparently, from what I understand, this pole is constricting egress and access to a parking area. So they're going to move the pole 45 feet in a northerly direction. There's a tree there. I don't know if the tree's coming down or not. I drove by the spot on the way in here this evening. But the pole will be placed in a grassy strip between a curbstone and a sidewalk that is currently in just 45 feet north.
So you're going to be digging the street up?
No.
Oh.
Eversource will be digging the street up to place the conduit.
The people you represent will be digging the street up?
Verizon. Eversource is going to dig it up, not Verizon.
Verizon replaced the pole. Eversource has placed the conduit.
So is anyone from Eversource here? Okay.
That's too bad, because I'm always concerned when they're digging up a street about whether or not there's gas leaks on that street and whether they've coordinated, as we have requested time and time again, with the gas company, especially now the strike is over, and they should be attending to these things. So we can't have an answer, and I would like an answer to that question.
Glad you brought that up. When I visited the site on the way here this evening, there was a distinct and strong spill of gas on site.
Okay, so that's a good reason why we need Eversource here to talk about this issue. Furthermore, I would like to suggest that if we vote on this, I don't want to vote on it without Eversource here, frankly.
I don't either.
But when we vote on this, you know, you mentioned this issue about the tree. I want it to be clear, my concern is that the tree warden must be involved in the evaluation of whether that tree should come down. I am reluctant to have any tree come down on the public way. We value our trees here. We value our trees here, and I would want his agreement that it's diseased, or in some other way, should endanger to the public, and not in some other way. Otherwise, got to find another way around it.
And that's up to the tree warden.
Right. I think Utility asking to dig up our streets, and they don't show up for their hearing, is, if nothing else, rude. And I don't think we should grant it until they can come and explain the impact on our street. Look us in the eye and say they're going to restore the pavement to the condition it's in, and-
Notify the gas company of the gas leak and have them come fix it-
Right.
Before, you know-
And notify abutters, and do whatever else they need to do. And I don't think this has ever happened, at least not in my term on the board. So if they, if they want a permit, they better show up. So I am going to table this. Sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to know how that impacts your company.
We would normally just wait for the proper procedures for the town to get approved to replace, replace the pole. It may hold up some of the construction for the, for the new building. But as far as Verizon is concerned, we'll just schedule another appointment and come out and address it properly.
Right, you guys came.
Thank you.
Is, is, is there a separate thing we can do for Verizon, so they don't have to show up again?
I was under the impression there were two separate petitions, one for conduit, one for pole. Verizon is here for the pole.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of bundled together on our calendar.
But I do think there are separate petitions. Peter, can you help us with this? Peter?
Yeah, but if you go to A7, order for joint pole relocation, it's Verizon and N-Star doing business.
Both utilities have interest in the pole. Verizon owns the maintenance of the pole, therefore-
So, okay, so for the first one, is there any digging?
There won't be digging, we'll dig a hole and put a new pole in.
But there's, the permit is for conduits and manholes, and the pole. Peter, can you help-
But if they're going to dig a hole for a new pole, assuming they're going to dig it near that tree, I don't want them to dig near the tree unless-
Well, I don't mean to mislead you that the tree is an issue. I visited the site this evening, and there is a tree between where the pole is and where it's proposed to be.
Eversource to install one-hundred-and-fifty-three feet of conduit to Verizon's pole. So the conduit is, is part of this.
Yeah. Yes, the pole has to be in the place that we asked, in order for them to place the conduit.
Right. So.
I'm not sure Verizon has to come back, but-
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think Verizon has to come back, because they're, they're just doing, it's, it's, it's Eversource is digging our street up.
But isn't Verizon digging the hole for their pole?
Yeah, but they don't need a special permit for that. Yeah. I don't, I don't know what else to say. I don't, I don't see how we can grant it.
Okay.
So, thanks.
I'll let them know, thanks for consideration.
Yeah, sorry.
But, but for next hearing, or when this comes up again, Verizon, I assume, doesn't-
So we, we, yeah, Verizon doesn't have to come back.
We should let them know.
So the, the next one is on Coolidge Street. Is that the same project?
N-Star is still not here.
Right.
Hello, hello, my name is Danny Dinesh, I'm with the development team.
Right.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. We're, we're not taking down any trees. We, we are keeping all the trees there. We're moving the pole up the street a little bit, because the existing pole is in very bad condition, and it is within, like, five feet of our, the building that we're putting up. So we're trying to move it down where there's, where there's a bigger setback from the property. And the engineering department of this town has seen it, everyone has seen it, it's just, I guess, that didn't, that Eversource didn't show up today. But it has nothing to do with the tree.
Okay.
And the, and the digging will be in the street, and not on the sidewalk where the trees are.
Right, that's the problem. They're, they're, they're going to destroy our street, and we want them here, so we can look them in the eye and tell them they got to put it back.
I understand.
But the conduit's not going into the area where the tree roots would be.
Right.
Correct, I just wanted to clarify that.
What about the homeowner to where the pole is being moved? Have they been notified?
The, the pole is, will still be in front of 455 Harvard Street, just moving a little bit further away from Harvard Street.
And I assume you're absorbing the cost of this?
Correct. I mean, we're putting in a new, like, much better pole then.
So you're absorbing the cost-
Correct.
-and tearing up the street as well?
Correct.
How about fixing a gas leak?
There's too many of those.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, guys. But-
So we continue the hearing.
So we, we're continuing the hearing, that's the formal, do we have to do a vote, or just continue the hearing? Okay. Okay, so special town meeting, we've-
So did you open a second hearing?
Oh, okay, so I need to open the second hearing, item thirteen, a public hearing on the petition of N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource Energy for permission to construct a location in such line of conduits and manholes on Coolidge Street. That's item thirteen. Last call for N-Star, they're not here, we'll table, we'll continue this item two. That's actually never happened with Utility, didn't show up. Okay, so let's talk about town meetings. So of course, we've received a petition to call a special town meeting, signed by two-hundred, more than two-hundred voters, with a specific warrant article, to see if the town will raise and appropriate a transfer of some money to fund the costs of adequate, adequate to appropriate some or all of the Col, the Newberry College property, a property situated in elementary school. That's a very narrow warrant article for a very specific purpose, and we will do what we're legally required to do, and, and call a special town meeting. We will set the date and sign the warrant next week, we're not prepared to do that tonight. Since then, we've also received a petition with lead petitioners Paula Friedman and John Harris for a resolution, which is a bit more broadly worded. What I think, I, I think town meeting should be able to consider the resolution, but we'll, we'll find the procedural way to have that happen. What I suspect, what I'll suggest to my colleagues is, we'll, we'll probably wind up calling two special town meetings, a special within the special, I guess, because the, the way the wording of the, of the, the enabling legislation, we're, according to town council, we're limited to the petition to be in that special town meeting. So to consider anything else, we would need another town meeting, and there may be, I know of at least one other warrant article we might want to put on there, and perhaps others.
On the same evening.
On the same evening, so, which brings us to the reserve fund transfer. To call a special town meeting, it costs money. So we, we need to pay for it, and it's not in the budget. So the way we need to pay for it is by transmitting a request for a transfer from the reserve fund. And I, the town clerk has given us a eight-thousand-dollar number, eight thousand dollars a night. So we're assuming a one-night town meeting for eight thousand dollars. So I will move that we authorize a request for a transfer to fund a special town meeting for eight thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so the action on the special town meeting will happen next week. So the next item, and it's the last item we have for tonight, is the question of establishing a Newberry College advisory committee, setting a charge and making appointments. And I know there's been a lot of attention to this, I know on the town meeting members' listserv, and I know there are a lot of folks who are interested in this. And of course, everyone, everyone by now knows that Newberry College has announced that they are closing, and the word that we've heard from them is that they will be considering selling their campus, which provides the town with some opportunities and some risks. And I think the opportunity is, is very rare that such a large tract of land in this town becomes available. So I think we need to consider whether we're, whether we're interested in making a bid for the property. And it's not something we do every day, so I think it's, it's something we need some help with. The word that we're getting is, this is going to be happening pretty quickly. The college, we've heard, is now in the process of engaging a broker, and that's when stuff will start happening. We, we don't know exactly when, but we need to be prepared, and we need to start thinking about it now. So I'm going to be, I, I've been working with select board member Heller to draft a charge for committee to help us, and the charge has the committee advisory to the select board with the purpose to examine, analyze, and report on the legal, procedural, and financial issues, as well as provide strategic advice and a preliminary use-out analysis for the possible acquisition of some or all of Newberry College. The committee will support the acquisition phrase, phase of the property. The committee will not be advising the select board on the ultimate use of the property. And that would be determined through a future planning process, should the town successfully acquire the property. Additionally, should the town not be successful, a future planning process would consider land use regulation strategies. We're going to be requesting a reserve fund transfer of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to support the work of this committee, and we're hoping to use that for various professional services, to include things like legal appraisal, some architectural services to determine whether certain things can happen on that property. And the committee will help us determine which professional services will be required. And we're also asking in the charge that this proposed charge, that the committee hold at least one public hearing prior to delivering its final report to the board. And the report, they're going, the committee is going to be looking at legal issues, including assessment of known restrictions, title search easements, also looking at legal aspects of acquisition. How much specificity do we need to meet the procurement laws? Can we, should we partner with another organization, restrictions, potentially selling off if we were to purchase? Prior to knowing exactly what we wanted to do with the property, we may determine certain pieces of it are excess, can, can we sell it off? And then acquisition structures. Committee will also be in charge of looking at an assessment of site conditions, what are the conditions of the buildings, and some preliminary assessment of possible uses, including site for school, including a test fit of a two- and three-section elementary school, facilities for beep, potential office space, relocation of existing rentals, open space, affordable housing, senior housing, other municipal facilities, including a senior center, a satellite senior center, and whatever else. An extremely important piece of this is going to be determination of acquisition strategy, and how to best engage with the acquisition process. Bid strategy, preparation of a bid, consideration of other competition for the bid, and how best to compete, and even considerations of reasons not to purchase the property, and consideration of partnership opportunities. Lastly, we're asking the committee to look at cost and financing options, and to oversee a value assessment of the property, assistance in preparation of an offer and bid package, and an examination of finance options, including how much of it, if any, can be funded through CIP? Will we need a debt exclusion override? How much can be funded by redirection of existing rental payments, or anything else? So the committee that I'm going to be proposing is the following. chaired by myself, with an alternate of select person Heller, and the reason we're doing that is, in the coming months, due to personal reasons, I may not be in town very much. Steve Hyken from the planning board, Ranch Kimball, who's a gentleman I've met through the, his involvement in the Waxes, what's going on over there, but he's, he's the former chairman of the board of Wheelock College when they were merging with BU, and he's also on the BU Board of Trustees. So he brings a really important perspective. Janet Fearman on our building commission, she brings, she's a lawyer, and has done deals, and she knows how the town, how, how this kind of procurement works. Paul Sainer of the Economic Development Advisory Board, who's helped us with a lot of our projects in zoning. Kathy Spiegelman, who's vice president at Northeastern, formerly Harvard, whose, her field is planning and real estate and higher education. Helen Charlepski of the school committee, Georgia Johnson at the suggestion of the president of the Fisher Hill Neighborhood Association, and Bobby Nabel of the advisory committee. And in, in trying to find folks, we were looking for some specific expertise, we weren't looking for folks involved in either pro or con of any particular issue in the past. We were looking for people who could help us analyze this real estate transaction, help us strategize, help us analyze it. And that's, and that's kind of it.
Yes, vote.
So, any questions from the board?
No, I think that there was one-
Did I miss something?
No, it's, it's just a editing, which is- No, it's just a editing, which is on the, the second page, the second sub-bullet.
Oh, yeah.
It should, the test fit, the estimate for two- and three-section schools.
That should be moved over.
Should go under the school.
And I added explicit consideration of partnership opportunities in acquisition strategy. We have it in legal analysis, but I'm adding it to...
In acquisition.
To acquisition strategy.
And then on the first page, this is a minor formatting point. I think the first point under legal analysis and the second point under legal analysis just needs a bullet point there. They're just sort of floating there, so...
The assessment of known restrictions.
Assessment of known restrictions and then general acquisition questions.
Yes, yes.
They just need, they need a bullet point.
I know a number of people are here interested in this. If you want to say anything, yeah, come on up.
I'm ready.
Okay, glad to hear it.
How long are we giving them?
Well, I think the question is how much time are we giving them? I think, I think that's going to be determined by the college process. And that's going to drive this, I think. And I think it's going to happen pretty quick. And it's going to be interesting to see if, how the timing of the town, of the town meeting fits in here. Because in effect, we're kind of doing what the, what the warrant articles have asked us to do, or at least I think we are. And so it's, so if nothing else, we can report a status. You know, whether we should be having a town meeting to do that, you know, we can, that's kind of moot at this point, I guess. But it is what it is. What I think we're going to do, just because of the timing, so we'll put, we'll also probably wind up putting a Newberry College warrant article on the May town meeting warrant because we don't know how the timing is going to work. So we'll have, we'll have a placeholder in May for Newberry College and then we'll probably have our own placeholder in the April town meeting. Because the, the language submitted in the warrant article is flawed, shall we say, I think. So we, I think we need to strengthen the language and clean it up. So, okay, so I'll move, yeah?
Can I ask you how it's flawed, number one? And number two, I do want to point out that it doesn't preclude other uses. It only has one use that I push for, which is I would like to see we plan for elementary growth in the town.
Right.
But it doesn't in any way preclude other uses for that very large property.
The language does preclude other uses, whether or not it was your intention. So it's adequate to appropriate some or all of Newberry College property to situate an elementary school, period.
Yeah, so some of it, and you can do what you want with the rest of it.
Yeah, but...
Unfortunately, I...
That would be, in my view, outside the scope of the warrant article. So I would, we'll fix it.
And that was the reason why we proposed the other resolution.
Right. Right, we...
We got it.
We got it. We got it covered. Okay, so I'm going to move that we vote the charge as amended, along with the members as proposed. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we're off to the races. Now, all we need is money.
I think we've got to do the reserve fund transfer.
Oh, we have to do the reserve fund transfer. Okay, so I will move that we authorize a request for transfer from the reserve fund in order to study the town's interest in the disposition of the Newberry College campus, including, not limited to, the acquisition of all or part of the campus for municipal or school purposes.
And we are proposing that $150,000 be the amount that should be incorporated in that vote.
Right, so the vote should say $150,000. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, that concludes our business for tonight.